That's the main.
Building insurance company, building the weekend.
Oh, yeah.
Markets all over the place last week. I was like, God, this is, I don't hate markets. Because I got a fifty grand lay route.
No, we're not here.
Hustling and busting and swatting crazy stuff. I didn't see it. It makes sense. I was like, Jesus.
You shouldn't know. Did you say?
Well, well, who signed it?
No, we just had our own house on Saturday.
Nobody signed it. Nobody did.
No one.
He has signed it. He has.
The market is dead. The market is so slow. Our realtor usually does really well. It's like, dude, what's going on? He said, it's stingy. So I told Jenna, I said, well, we just need to rent that out until Monday's street. We sit on the year cost ourselves twenty bucks a day. I said, so let's just rent it out. He said, oh, we just remodel it if you get to rent it in your eyes. Well, that's a chance we're going to take.
It's just, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, Casey.
With this road.
And all of that.
So we're going to rent it out. I said, it's just sitting there costing me money. So I'm still going to pay the tax. I'm still going to pay the insurance. I'm still going to tell them about these.
Yes.
We didn't rent it out. This will be making me money.
And you have to, yes, not a year. Or did you, you were able to get some kind of real purchase?
Well, I just bought another.
What?
So I bought another property. And I was like, I had mine, I have mine sold at five hundred. Can get rid of it so I can give it to the guy. But he tried to pay for it. I said, no, not today. I want to take it. My son dropped it in your house.
And then the last sentence is like, whatever our script or something.
So I have two jobs in the house. So I was like, yeah, you can drive my little one.
Conducting business, Chief. Good evening and welcome to the City of Montgomery City Council meeting for May 27th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting order. It's at 6:01. We have a full forum up here, so that's exciting. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Johnson to do the invocation. Please stand and then pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for another opportunity to serve the City of Montgomery. Thank you, Father, that you give us wisdom and discernment, Father, to take care of the affairs of this city. And thank you for that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. American flag, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Just a reminder, if you'd make sure your phones are off on silent so that we are not interrupted, that would be most appreciated. I didn't receive anything for the public forum for anyone to speak, so we'll be moving on to the consent agenda. Item number four on your agenda, consideration of possible action on the city council regular meeting minutes of April 8th, 2025. Item number five, consideration of possible action on the city council special meeting minutes of April 11th, 2025. Council, you can take these cumulatively or independently. What would you prefer?
Cumulatively.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes published under items four and item five.
Motion by Mr. Zowicki. It's going to change every week, by the way. Until I get it. Was there a second?
There's a second.
Okay, second by Ms. Fox. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of accepting the item as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we'll accept the consent agenda as presented. Public hearing. The city council received comments from the public on the below listed items. Number six on your agenda, convene into a public hearing to receive comments on a request for a manufactured home to be placed at 413 Westway Drive, Montgomery, Texas, for the establishment of voter residency by residential occupancy within the proposed MUD 255 for tri-point homes. Counsel, this is the typical for a MUD, they have to have a mobile home or occupant. I'm sorry?
You need to convene.
Oh, I apologize. 604, we're in the public forum. No one is speaking? All right, it is 604. We will close the public hearing. Regular agenda, item number seven, consideration of possible action on a request for a manufactured home to be placed at 413 Westway Drive, Montgomery, Texas, for the establishment of voter residency by residential occupancy within the proposed MUD 255 for tri-point homes.
Anything, members, to make any details or comments to it? I think to go through the, they were required for a manufactured home to be located outside of a mobile home.
This is, in writing, it's temporary, right?
It is.
Okay. I make a recommendation that we accept the placement of the manufactured home at 413 Westway Drive, Montgomery, Texas, for the establishment of voter residency by residential occupancy within the proposed MUD 255 for tri-point homes.
Motion by Mr. Zowicki, seconded by Ms. Fox, that we approve the request for a manufactured home to be placed at 413 Westway Drive, Montgomery, for establishment of voter residency, of residential occupancy within the proposed MUD 255 for tri-point homes. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we will accept item number seven as presented. Item number eight on your agenda, consideration of possible action on the partial replat for Jada Cleaner, Section 1, Track 2, located at 1,005 College Street. Mr. Wizniewski.
Good evening. Starting on your packets on page thirty-two, you'll see an amendment from us, followed by the, some of the systems different, whatever else. Page, you'll see the original flat, two pages after that, and then the proposed following. What this is, is there's, currently there was one track that went all the way from College to Caroline Street. The property owner requested it be settled by that parcel under two, so one parcel running College, one parcel running Caroline. They meet all the size requirements, etc., of the city, the various, etc., being requested. One thing that you will notice in the final plats is they are dedicating additional right-of-way along Caroline Street to even out the right-of-way, so as it continues down, and the buildings of Montgomery will have a full sixty-foot right-of-way as it goes down. So P and Z reviewed this at their main meeting. They offer no objection to recommend approval, and we recognize.
Chris, with the proposal of two homes, I'm assuming that's what's going to happen here. Are we concerned about drainage on College since?
They'll have to submit that, so as far as, you know, in terms of just plating rules, it works. As far as, you know, the floodway regulations, there is floodway on the site, they'll have to follow that ordinance when they go to get those houses completed.
I make a motion that we approve the partial replat for Jada Cleaner, Section 1, Track 2, located at 1,005 College Street.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Zowicki, seconded by Mr. Olson, that we accept the partial replat for Jada Cleaner, Section 1, Track 2, located at 1,005 College Street. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority, majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the partial replat for Jada Cleaner, Section 1, Track 2, located at 1,005 College Street, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we'll accept the replat for Jada Cleaner, Section 1, Track 2, located at 1,005 College Street. Item number nine on your agenda, consideration of possible action on the partial replat for Buffalo Springs, Section 2.
Similar to the last item, this is a partial replat, but in reverse. So currently, this is lots twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and third, of the Buffalo Springs Section 2 plot. The property owners have requested to combine these lots into two, essentially there's a lot between them, split it fifty-fifty for each side. So if you look, you'll see on page thirty-seven, amendment from us recommending approval of the partial replat. Planning zoning permission, it also is per recommend approval at their main meeting. Item following on page thirty-eight is a whole letter that is for the Buffalo Springs section, so there's more of that, that just got copied over. But then following, you'll see the original flat, as well as the replat that shows that combination of the two lots.
This is the version.
On the Springs Section 2.
This.
Yes. Each of them did.
The architectural control, I do not know for sure, but I know that individuals involved are partly the architectural controlling. I do not know, and that's something that we can check. I don't, I'll have to check with the attorney on whether the plating, because this isn't building or structure or landscaping or anything like that, that I don't think would take architectural control. Since it's just plating, however, I do not know the answer.
So they're just eliminating a vague law.
Exactly.
I make a motion we accept. Agenda item number nine is presented.
Motion by Mr. Donaldson.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Zowicki to accept item number nine as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote.
Who are the two parties involved?
Randy Burley and Wendell Harrison. All those in favor of accepting item number nine as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we will accept item number nine as presented. Item ten, on your agenda, consideration of possible action on a variance request related to the required minimum lot size, front yard setback and side yard setbacks for the villages of Montgomery Development, Development Number 250.
You need to pack it. Starting on page forty-three, you'll see a planning zoning permission recommendation regarding these variances. So just to reset the stages of development, we did the across the street. I did a presentation to council with the platter video and all the graphics a couple meetings ago, and showed the alley load development with the $700,000 homes, with the boulevard streets that went down the middle, and the commercial reserves along 105. So what this does, these are the variances in order for them to achieve that name plan. This doesn't approve their plans, this doesn't approve the development agreement, but they need, obviously, you know, their development is not kind of typical single-family development in the city. So in order for them to really be able to move forward, they need to get these variances in place, so then they can do their plating, they can go through the process, etc. So the variances that they are requesting is the front yard setback to ten feet from the required twenty-five. Again, those alley load houses closer to the street that were shown in the video. Five-foot side yard setback to the required ten. Forty-nine hundred square feet of lot area in minimum versus your nine thousand square foot requirement. Forty-five foot width versus your seventy-five foot width, and a hundred and ten foot depth of your one-twenty. So P and Z did review this at their main sixth meeting, and they approved it.
I have two questions. How wide are those streets? Because it's going to come in as a boulevard, right? So.
So they are, the developers here, they didn't write into that question. They are not asking for any payment variances, so there are twenty-eight foot streets throughout. The boulevard, I believe, is two-thirds of the sections, if I remember correctly. And then a large balcony in between for.
My second question is, this variance doesn't include, is not going to include the green space requirement for the small lot?
That's correct. They have not requested a variance for green space, but they are proposing a lot of green space on the property. Through the plating, they will be required to show that explanation, which shows how they're needing to compensate.
What's the status?
No, go ahead.
What's the status with the fire marshal as far as these lots and.
They have not been asked, at least from, from the city side, they have not been asked about their, their home variances.
Yeah, but I mean, I want to add something, and Ronnie from the fire marshal is saying it's okay to have this house so close.
I know, by certain conversation with developers.
I think if we can, if we look at the Texas code, right, as long as you have, they have to have brick walls, right? They have to have fireproof wall if they're going to be within a, I want to say seven feet. I can't remember exactly what that, what it is. If it's under, under ten, it has to have the brick wall, fireproofing, extra.
These are five and five. They're five on each side of the property, so a total of ten foot.
Right.
So you're saying it has to be seven feet or?
Well, our code guy would have a, it's five feet minimums. Okay. I couldn't remember what it is, but it's, I know it takes special fire coating for fire, fire walls to do it, so.
It's similar to Montgomery Bend. It's the same width. Mr. Jonathan. Why, did you have something?
Well, I was just going to say, I know one thing's about, is the access of the few mentioned in the past. So all roads should be, as we've mentioned earlier, twenty-eight foot, I think four months thirty, multiple points of access, Caroline and State Highway 105. But it's not shown on a lot of the land plans we've did, so the additional curbs that will probably get the commercial development along the front, which is box out as commercial, so there should be some internal access there as well. Obviously, with city requirements, outside requirements, we'll develop a traffic study just to verify that there's not going to be any negative impacts. But normal, we process through this is to get a letter or something from the fire marshal.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind my comrades here, not comrades, but, not too long ago, the city spent a lot of money to have professionals come in and review our ordinances and help us plan the city for the future. After that whole process was through, the city council approved their product, leaving the seventy-five foot width lots in our ordinances. The reduction from seventy-five feet to forty-five feet is a forty percent reduction. But coincidentally, it is a forty percent increase in density of the houses per acre, with the results being that the number of residents between, starting today from what we have in design, up to what is being built, we have over two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight houses being built. National average is one point five to two point five cars per residence. So we are looking at an increase over the next two years of four thousand five hundred and fifty-six cars. If you look at the map of the city, all streets lead to 105. We are looking at an increase of four thousand four hundred and fifty-six cars on 105 over the next two years. If you line all those cars up bumper to bumper, it stretches out to eleven point seven miles. Now, are we voting for the people of the city to have a big traffic jam by reducing the size of the lots and allowing more condensing of our cities? I recommend you vote no.
So prior, months, months, months ago, we talked about this. It's a different product, and it's a higher end product, and that's why we were, yes, we have a seventy-five foot lot, but that's why we were amenable for that variance, because the product and the high-end product that they're bringing to town. And I think there's only seventy-eight lots. Is that right?
Hundred and thirty-seven.
Well, they're that close, and then there's bigger, because those are just the alleyway lots, and then the other lots.
Right, there's a mixture of the close lots and the.
Yes, correct. So that helps alleviate that, some of that concern as well.
It still, it still produces a condensity that we shouldn't be putting up with. It started with the Hells of Montgomery, Town Creek Crossing, and you go on and on. Where are we going to stop this rapid growth? This growth is driving us crazy.
We can't stop it. We just have to manage it.
You're not managing it by doing this. You're not managing.
I have a difference of opinion.
Well, you're not managing it because you're increasing the density.
Are we supposed to not let anybody build anything and nobody move here?
No, let them follow the ordinance.
But this is a different product in the end, and we have already said that we want this product here. And we voted in, and this is part of the process.
And you will rue the day when you see the traffic and the upset people, you're going to have to bring on four to six more police officers to handle traffic.
That's false.
What's false about it?
Chief, how many more police officers do we need? Would we build out?
In the next two years, we'll be hiring about three PSOs, probably about two more police officers, and also a couple of records.
But the PSOs are non-patrol. Those are admin. So no, we have planned out our police, what we can handle, what we can do. It's not like it's our first day.
And 105 is getting expanded, so that's going to help too, as well as 149. Unfortunately, I agree, we're going to be locked up, but this, we've been highly ignored by the state and county. Now we're getting attention, which is great. A little late, but better than ever, so.
But I will agree with the mayor. I agree with both of you that the density is, it is, it is a lot more density. We've talked about the density with the area that it's in. I think it can handle it. We've talked with the developers. We've all agreed that we like the product, and at this point in the game, it's not something I want to go back on my, what I said yesterday. I make a motion to accept item number ten as presented.
Motion by Mr. Olson, seconded by Mr. Donaldson, that we accept item number ten as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number ten as presented, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say, those opposed, say no?
No.
Okay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and item number ten is accepted. Number eleven on your agenda, consideration of possible action on authorizing WGA to complete a utility and economic feasibility study, and then on the BCS Capital Development, number 2415.
This is all going where it meets this development. This is between C.B. Stewart and Buffalo Springs Tribe on the north side of 105. Their original feasibility study is focused on the thirty-two total acres, close on, running on Buffalo Springs and wrapping around. They, in a sense, put these six acres adjacent under contract, so that the heart corner of C.B. Stewart and 105. And what this is, is to have been updated feasibility study, say what extensions, roadway improvements, etc., are needed to serve that piece of the property. Bring that back to you, you know, as a updated study, so here it is. That's what this item is, that this item is not requesting any type of, we talked about this before, but saying, and again, any type of change to the development, the MOU that's been agreed upon. This is just, how do, how does the scope of utility improvements and roadway improvements change with the addition of these six acres to the site? You'll see it updated later in the plan, on sheet sixty-three of your package, which shows the full, yeah, the full site.
The new plan that they're submitting here shows three fast food restaurants and a gas station. How are we going to, you got two fast food restaurants here right now. You got Burger King and McDonald's with less than half a mile apart. Who's going to go to the five different fast food restaurants?
I do not know the proposed uses of the property, who the end users are. I know that the end users have been shared with the city, or obviously the academy, which is the anchor purpose development, and then Texas Roadhouse, who they mentioned.
Those are just concepts.
That's the concept, but no one is fully committed yet.
Academy and the Texas Roadhouse, they only need to.
But your plan shows three fast food.
Yeah.
It's just a, yeah, it's just a rendering potential.
Right, it could, it is, you know, they're not locked in, as long as it falls within the table of uses, it could be, you know, three banks and one fast food, or, you know, it could be anything that falls within that table of uses on those ultimate uses of the pads and the split of the pad sites. And right now, they show seven different pads. If they have some larger user command, they can reduce the number of pads. It's all subject to change. This is the base available guess.
Chris.
Yes, sir.
I look at this, I don't see the six acres.
Oh, yes, I.
Right, where are they at?
So it's the southwest corner of the property, so you see C.B. Stewart is roughly the last two front pad sites. So the, what looks like a fast food restaurant, and then the retail building, and then, again, more or less the last three users at that top.
Like directly south of Ransoms?
Correct.
Yeah, almost like a straight line.
On the other side of the street?
No, on ransom side, south of Ransoms.
They just redid their rendering.
Yeah, they just extended it.
They just extended their picture out, yeah.
From C.B. Stewart to Buffalo Springs all the way across.
You know, we don't even have these pad sites that they show just west of Academy. Those are gone from my understanding, because of the district.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. The district is on the east side, and these are all.
In the picture right there.
Yeah, this is, this is exactly how they proposed, but they've just added because they purchased six, the six acres. So one side to the east is correct. It's the west that's extended.
Yes.
Okay, so they made room for these, the six acres made room for these extra.
Yes, that's correct.
Additional retail.
Great.
I make a motion that we accept item eleven as presented.
Motion by Ms. Fox to accept item number eleven as presented.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Donaldson. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of accepting item number eleven as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept item number eleven as presented. Item number twelve on your agenda, discussion of possible action to move in code ERP, Pro 10, and municipal justice to Tyler Cloud SaaS.
What do you think, Mayor and Council? The item before you tonight is a proposal to move from a on-premise environment where we host on our own network to a cloud-based platform. Does not change our software, doesn't change who we're doing, who we're doing the software business with, with Tyler. It's just a matter of where it's hosted and how we access it. So just to give you an idea, the being premise-based means we have the software right here on our network, and each one of us that use that particular software have it downloaded onto our computers. That's how we access it. There are some limitations with that, in the fact that if we have any issues with our server, the chip core servers have, you know, they have to end alive, which we're coming up on right now, so we're needing to replace both servers. So there are some complications that come into effect when we, or come into play when we look at needing help with anything in INCODE. So for example, today, we have a problem with being able to access a report in INCODE. And we had one user, we could not get the access set up correctly so that every time they ran a report, it was coming up blank. And I did, I spent some time in there this morning, figured out permissions, had to get on chat with INCODE. I was on hold for about an hour and fifteen minutes before somebody got up with me. And of course, I'm doing other stuff in the meantime, but in the background, that's running. They come on. They spent about forty-five minutes to try to determine what the problem is. And, long story short, we eventually figured out what the problem is, and we were able to get that permission set up. The problem with that is because we are hosted here, it's unique to us, right? And so it's a, in the cloud environment, that would have been done differently because, well, first of all, the vast majority of their support is on their cloud product, because that's where it makes a lot of sense for them. In, in the finance world, or in, you know, accounting, bookkeeping, it used to be QuickBooks, you hosted it, it was a desktop version. Now we've gone to online, and all of their resources have gone into building a bigger, more robust platform in the cloud. So that's a similar kind of situation here. One of the big things as we look at acquiring a new building and making a move, by having a cloud-based option, we virtually have no downtime. As long as we have internet connection, we have the ability to, to be operational. So we don't have to worry about, you know, any of the servers move, go forward or operational, or cashiering on the court side, on the utility side, as well as payroll, accounts, payroll, all that kind of thing. So there is a, we pay an annual fee right now for all of our different components, whether it be from the utility billing, or the municipal justice piece, or the court piece, the cashiering, finance, the financials, payroll, all of the different modules we have, we pay an annual fee for that. We would continue to pay an annual fee for that, but we would have a reduced cost of server, potentially some IT support, those type of things. And that's going to be not that much wasted time.
Efficient work.
Yes. Not to say we're going to be, but it would be in a, an environment that's not specific to us. Like today, one of the things they were doing, we talked about this GL conversion, we are live today on that conversion, but it took them all afternoons back until, like, with OCS, needing access to the network, getting off the network, back on the network. So there, you know, there are things like that, there's challenges that we face being local. So, the overall cost between all the platforms is about a $12,000 increase for the software, or accessing the program. You know, that's, again, I can't, I can't put a number on the other pieces, the efficiency piece of it, I just.
Well, two new servers is going to be 30,000 to 40,000, so.
It doesn't eliminate our need for the servers overall, if we do have a network. However, it does allow us to reduce the capacity of the media of those servers.
I think you say, doesn't it facilitate better storage and better security?
What was that?
Doesn't it facilitate, having this, the power cloud, doesn't it facilitate that we would have better storage and better security?
It absolutely gives us better storage. The, we currently have backups that happen, our information within the cloud environment is continuously stored, and it's stored in two separate locations. Everything is multi-factor authentication, so when you log in, you have to go through several different steps in order to get logged in. But yes, it is a very secure environment.
And Marion, when there's issues, we no longer would have to go to OCS to get them, and if they don't know it, then they have to go to ENCODE. It takes them out of the middle, we go directly to ENCODE, correct?
Directly to ENCODE, yeah, and our service is a part of it, there is no extra service cost for that. In order to convert over, which I was actually surprised when I came here, that y'all went live on ENCODE in 2022, and that you were premise-based. Because in 2020, 2019, 2020, they made a huge shift to really kind of not promote their premise-based product and move towards the cloud-based environment. And, you know, primarily because all of their enhancements and everything are being done in that cloud environment. Their, the premise is, they recognize there's some limitations, right? There's problems, it takes longer time for support to help, all of those kind of things. So, I was surprised that y'all converted in '22 over premise-based. But I do understand that it was probably more to do with the length of time from signing the contract to when you actually went live in the product. But, there typically is a conversion cost, but they are waiving that cost. If we are able to sign their agreement by June 7th, we would get on their calendar, but the implementation would not take place until like, maybe late August, September. But we wouldn't de-bill until October 1st, because we are currently, they have currently paid for this year. And they'll prorate us and give us credit back for the premise-based, but since we're with them, they'll push out that first payment to the next facility here for budget purposes for us.
And how long is that?
Go ahead.
How much does that fee that they're waiving?
So I don't have a specific, because it's not in there. I can tell you that my Tyler representative was shocked when he saw it come back and not have a fee on there. He said typically, your conversion fee is, with all of the modules that we have, it wouldn't be unusual for at least $20,000.
And how long is that migration going to take?
It should take, maybe six weeks?
Okay.
Yeah, so we'd be fully operational in our environment, and we would do some testing in the cloud environment before they flip the switch and put us fully into the cloud.
So I'm supportive of your switch, I just want you to be well aware that all of the hopes and dreams that they sell you on speed and accessibility is absolute crap, so you're going to slow down, I promise. We've moved, I don't know how many of our programs to the cloud with the promise that it'll be faster, every single time, it is not. They are much slower, you can't download the same size files that you used, you're gonna have to do two and three different, different pieces to get the same download that you used to be able to download from your servers, I promise you that. I, I'm supportive of you, because I know it's easier, and, and, you know, hopefully it's cleaner, but don't get sold on it's going to be better, because it's going to slow down.
Okay.
And the $12,000, does that mean another thousand a month is like the fee we have to pay?
Right, so we pay the fee, and we believe, but yes, it is, we pay quite $20,000 a month for this environment, for us, is what we're doing.
Wouldn't that balance out by, would that balance out by efficiency and?
We believe so, but Casey's telling you it's going to be significantly slower.
It's much slower.
I, I have talked to some clients who have moved from premise-based to cloud, most recently like at the spring conference for Government Finance Opposition Station. And I haven't come across anybody who was, gosh, I wish we would have never gone to the cloud. Everybody has been, you know, very much like, the cloud has a big difference in what they're.
I don't know, I just, it's, you're, you're going from hardline, where it's just right now, you have it, to let's hope it comes down.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks. Are you referring to parallels, their cloud-based are parallels for Tyler? Because I've experienced that through another city twice. And I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Olson, but it's not quite as significant as you think for this program.
Okay. Like I said, I hope, I hope I'm wrong, but all of the, all of the programs that have recently moved to the cloud has been miserable, so.
Kimberly, do you have any concerns about the software move?
I don't have any concerns, I actually think it's good for the court, because we're on ENCODE 9, and everyone else is on ENCODE 10, so instead of me having to truck all of my files over to Marion like I did today, I think we can simply just click a button, and she can just limit her files, and everything kind of talks together on through the cloud. So I just took her, like, two rolls of paper over to.
Two rolls.
But that's a yes, right?
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm supportive, I think, I hope it does, make us communicate better.
I hope we get at least a half a day back every month, and that's for sure.
Yeah, that's good.
I make a motion that we move to approve ENCODE ERP Pro 10 and municipal justice to the Tyler Cloud SAS.
Motion by Ms. Fox to approve the ENCODE ERP Pro 10 and municipal justice Tyler Code SAS platform. Seconded by Mr. Olson. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of moving ENCODE ERP Pro 10 and municipal justice to Tyler Cloud SAS platform, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will move ENCODE ERP Pro 10 and municipal justice to Tyler Cloud SAS platform. Thank you. Departmental reports, item number 13, municipal court report, April 2025. Ms. Duckett.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. You have a court report in front of you. The citations for April were 131, and the revenue was 300 from, I'm sorry, not quite there. Sorry, 330, $61,077, then. Does anyone have any questions for the municipal court?
I'd like to say that you did a great job in the Citizens Academy, you and your team presenting. All right, next up, item 14, discussion of possible action on financial reports for the period ended April 30th, 2025.
All right, so you have the April report in front of you. The, you saw in my cover sheet, I talked a little bit about the fact that sales tax was slightly lower. I did go back and look at last year, we had a couple of one-time payments last April, that we didn't have this April, nothing to be alarmed by. And other than that, are there any other questions?
I had one, but I did not write it down. It was some check, and I did not recognize the name.
Okay.
On the check. But I don't, I don't see it right now, so, it's okay. I'll, I'll call you and ask you.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions?
Do we need to make a motion specifically for this item, or can we use it in all of, while we do all the departmental reports?
All together.
Okay, just making sure. All right, item 15, public works monthly report, April 2025.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. You emailed out a corrected version of the report earlier today. All of us, we, it's part of our visitor to remember, I just forgot that it may have been finished last month. Other than that, you have the report ready, you have to answer any questions.
Keeping an eye on the place, Morgan?
Keeping an eye on it. I'll let, I'll let Chris prepare it for probably.
With four acres of us being sold to MISC back to them, is there going to be any change in Cody's lawn service pricing?
Well, as soon as that closes, then we can quit mowing it.
Okay, so it's, okay, just making sure it's not a flat rate, we were going to.
No, no.
A fixation for that, okay.
Facility has its own, its own price, and the way the contractors are in this, if he doesn't mow a facility, then he has to.
Okay.
They do it that way on purpose, you know, so he doesn't need to do something for a month. A lot of times it'll be the list station, we control, he feels like it's, it'll ride another month, he holds straight, and he doesn't.
All righty. That's all I had. All right, we're pretty quiet tonight. Item 16, utility operations monthly report for April 2025. Is utility.
Council, we have the report in front of you. Looking ahead, we're pretty good at flushing again, we're trying to maintain the water quality throughout the system. So we've gone aggressive on that, and I think the county's been the best way to take care of it. And so, looking there, your accountability is over by 90%, which is what you want to be. Next is the construction plant, stating that you're going to fly to the discharge permit, so that's always good to see. And we'll start our water conservation district page, kind of see where we're at with the years, as far as pumpage, and where you're at in permit. Looking good so far, we're going to be paying questions as we get through the year.
All right.
When we flush, we just put that on the ground?
Yes, sir.
I know we've gotten a ton of rain, so that's great, but July and August, we won't get a ton of rain, and we're going to continue to flush. Is there any way we can get that water somewhere besides the ditch, like into the pond, or into the pond?
Well, I will say this, during the summer months, we do anticipate flushing less, because.
The sprinklers and stuff, yes.
Water usage will be the flushing force, and so usually the water quality will go down, and so you get the actual flushing in the system. But you're right, I mean, right now, it's fresh, it's going to be water quality.
Right.
And, and the main reason is, because you have these sections where you have very large diameter water tanks that were designed for, you know, to be completed, say like around.
Right.
But right now, we're incomplete, so it's a dead end right now. So the best way to keep that water quality is to flush those.
Oh, absolutely.
When you do the loop, and you've got usage in between, that goes away.
Okay. I just look at, you know, we're flushing a million gallons, whatever, and when our ponds are, the fish are, you know, we can see their scales because there's not enough water going around in, it's like, we'll put the water in the pond.
Our biggest tanker truck, our biggest tanker truck holds 7,000 gallons, so it's a lot of tanker trucks.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Item 17, building official report for April 2025. Mr. Hannah.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I don't know how it is, I moved up to the paddock order, I was more comfortable, I'm an introvert. I want to say the chief is just a fabulous god as a commissioner. Any reports, was there any?
Off the record.
Any or lack as we prepare a permits by permit type summary, I thought that might be more beneficial than the raw data that we were giving the last few months. Once you understand this isn't spot on accurate, we use a system with community core. We're about when a new construction starts, we assign a batch of permit number, and then the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, irrigation permits are sub-permits under that. So the numbers may not jive just exactly right. The, the main thing is that we feel like we're within the budget, when you look at the budget, that we're well under budget, what our companies charge in the city. But last month, total, grand total inspections, like 380, 300 planned reviews, so basically the volume is increasing. And I think this, when we give you the summary report each month, we'll be able to look and see how things are going. And also including just an example of our inspection report, we cover for a couple of other cities when you're talking about different programs and such. Other cities are just boggled, and they bought a program, they thought it was going to create all the time savings and so forth, and they're really struggling with it. So I just want to mention that if you go to conferences, you're spending the permit package and working the rate. In addition to the monthly, that's the last month, so we're going to be running a monthly, and here you go, so I just wanted to bring it to speed. The K-Hub model out in the hills of Town Creek has been completed, they have a CO, and I think they've moved in, I don't know if they're actually in operation yet, but they should be closed. Over in Red Bird Meadows, six models are now under construction. One of them is ready to start hanging cheap lock, the others are a pair of diamonds, they haven't weirdly gotten up there spagging yet. The others are moving along. Just as a caution, I don't want to offend Mike or anything, but letting these guys get started with no water and no electricity sure has been creating some issues out there. The crews are out there, the laborers are out there in the morning, and they got trucks all up down the road, and all of a sudden, the supply trucks start coming, and all of a sudden, the guys come to start trying to put in underground gas and electricity, and it's just a mess. So, a lot of developers, and they're anxious to sell lots, but it's really creating issues out in the field for staff, and people trying to get their work done, and we're worried our situation with the water, but.
Mike, we haven't had any issues, have we, since we have the water police out there? Yeah, that's good.
That's worked out.
Okay, yeah.
Anyway, six models are in construction, they're a little bit on the. MISB, CBT Center, the construction, they opened line up by January, I'm sorry, June 15th, because they dropped that thing, so we're going to start having a lot of files going on there. Menace to be amazing suddenly. Again, lots of developer questions between Tilly and I, a lot of people are just kind of asking non-specific, generic questions, but we know it's, development ideas coming down the road, so a lot more of that coming. The example of the report that was in the packet, that's just, that's how we do our inspections. At each time we go out to do an inspection, we're able to instantly resolve it, and it goes to the plumber, electrician, a builder, whoever needs to go to. Like, so I think our system is working very smoothly, and I get a lot of compliments from guys in the building and other cities that takes us two or three days to find out where we are, but they're able to get them, send to them. The big crucial things now, when you go to your conference, you're always going to hear about being able to go into the cloud and load their documents and request inspections, you know, it all sounds good, and everybody's good, but I've talked to, has had the problem. So, we're, and then talk with our developer to get to the point where we're wishing we will be able to let the builders load their documents and start the plan review, so we'll get it split up. The good thing about our program is it's developed by home detection inspectors, and they, they, they use it in the company that they have before they release it to the licensees, so I think things are going to get better as far as time detection. We turn things around with the 10 days on the plan review, what many cities are ready to do that? But prepared in the future, Cody has a BPI this week, and he'll take some classes, so I'll get him and Stephen both over the next year or two, a certified building technician, so there's a lot of cities around that don't have certified inspector. We've got three incoming inspectors and three certified code inspectors to pick themselves up here in Montgomery. up here in Montgomery. And congratulations, the mayor will be the welcome speaker at the Building Officials Association Conference, and be at Marburyville Link Road in August. Building officials from all of the states are going to laugh at that.
Hopefully not because of me, because I'm due. Question for you. You were on a pool safety program mission. How is that going?
This was Pool Safety Month. I felt guilty that I got a whole month, and Mike, we got a week for public safety. Still trying to work with folks and get fences up.
Your tires aren't flat, so I figured you're, it's going a little bit better.
It hasn't progressed like hopefully would, pretty much, enthusiasm about putting the add fences and such, but the new permits that we're doing, we're trying to get all that work out of the front end, so it's boiling deep, but you know, I get one flat month.
Okay, thank you for that.
Ready? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number eighteen, Discussion on Engineers Monthly Report.
All right. I started at page one twenty-three of your packets. I'll take the highlights, and stop if you have questions. Item one, the water plant two, improved project. We didn't receive two passes since the last meeting. As of April twenty fifth, they're seventy-one percent completed by time and situated by value, so they're right on, they're right on track. They did complete the well testing this past week. Everything came at great, performing better than expected, so they're actually filling their options now on upsizing some of the equipment, because it's able to support more pumping than was originally anticipated, which is a good problem, having more water than expected. On your sewer rehab project, we're waiting on final three videos of repairs from the contractors to be able to close that project out. Moving on to page two, the TP, or item number five, the town and town waste park renovation. We did receive revised limits on your permit, the draft, so we're able to get one, the phosphorus limit removed, they lowered some of the other limits on the ultimate phase of the plant, so it makes this phase a little bit easier, but we're setting up, so we'll have to do additional treatment on the second expansion of that plant. So HAP is working through that, but their design report to plan for that expansion are those additional treatments in the future.
So on that, hold on one second.
Sir?
I need to give you a name. I was told to reach out to this person with the state. I wrote it down here somewhere. Just remember. Rebecca Amieser. She handles a lot of the state grants for water and sewer for cities.
I'll call up to you. Moving on to items seven and eight of this, the two ARPA funded projects, both of those approval wrapped up right ago, but it's waiting on the fire environmental review. So there, we got an update today that they're still working on doing the environmental review, so once that's completed, we'll be able to get those two projects. Plus Morgan Erosion, as you mentioned earlier, Stan, so we have, over this past month, we engaged a geotechnical loan threshold consultant to give us some other options, just to make sure we bring back the right method. So we're looking now, so if you remember on Lone Star Parkway on the bridge, so the county did river rap, it failed, it came back, it was a concrete over the river rap, it failed, it came back with a sheet pile. So we're going through some sheet pile designs and trying to minimize, it's all based on how deep your sheet pile goes, and that, to bring back that recommendation and update the cost. So stuff has been ongoing, but we're just not ready to go forward because we don't, we don't want to do this. We're going to do this once, we don't want to touch it. So just making sure that we're all on the same page.
Is it still going to be under our projected budget? Who was holding?
That is one of the things we're working on. So I think we had like two hundred something thousand in it. That's what we're trying to determine now, is really, if we're going with sheet pile, how low debt can we go, or at least preliminarily, so we're not needing as much, because again, we have to protect against that ultimate erosion. And so when we come back at the next meeting, plan a spring and updated cost estimates, so we can see it all, so we'll have a timeline of that. The water plant, so we broke up our report a little bit differently, so this next section is all about development capital projects, just because they're all intermittent, so you can see what is city funded versus development funded directly. So the old management waterline extension, which is the last, ours, the piece of certain Johnson Development, they finished that final board with the railroad last Thursday, so now just testing and cleaning up, so we'll be able to get that line into service. On the top of the next page, you'll see a picture of the board. All the rest are general updates. Most of these designs are wrapped up between June and July, have those designs completed, completed, bidding and construction of all those projects, with the exception of number six, which is my crossing. Developers asked questions of the scope, so that design hasn't started yet. Development agreements, HEB has provided comments, we had a call with them last week. They have some, they're working on the wording, especially around the C.B. Stewart Memorial Monumentation on the site, and so they're concerned with how strict is the wording, so we asked them to provide something we can bring about to council and let y'all discuss to see if they have to have something, it can't just be taken out of the agreement, but give us some balance to work with.
No, we have opinions.
Right. On page four of our report, many things, so if you look on page one thirty-two of your packets, there are pre-development meetings met, so show over the last thirty, forty-five days, all the people who have called, or have had pre-development meetings with. So over the last thirty, forty-five days, there's been a lot of meetings, there's a couple that are not shown on there that have since called. So it's continuing to pick up. So we'll include this pre-development meeting met going forward, just so we all kind of know what's coming up and who's kicking tires. These aren't escrow agreements or anything to that point, but they're at least expressing interest in the city and development of the city. Moving on to page five of our report, one twenty-seven of your packets. Hills of Town Creek, section five, I just want to know, we did receive the playground and shared use path plans, so if you remember that this is the replat, where they are the variance to get to the park, and so they have some better plans, so they're working through that process. Down on platform views at the last meeting, zoning commission meeting, they did agree the likes of the road preliminary platform, that is the tri-point developer. We've already talked about Buffalo Springs and College Creek tonight. On to page six, the CTE Center, so as of, over the weekend, they finished their final physical punchless items, which is painting the hydrants to match the city standard. We got notified of that this morning. The last thing left is the maintenance bond, so we've been going back and forth, on my way here, contractors agreed to just paint the bond. So it sounds like we should have that for your next agenda, as well as we can set that water line extension. Other items, there's updates on construction, you'll see pictures of the pole panels, the electrical panels for the location of the area. We've already talked about it on the next page, your town and town place work. Text dot, so the access management, so we did have a stakeholders meeting on eight and thirteen of the text guy. They updated a couple things on project one, is scheduled to let in September of twenty twenty seven. City's portion is still within phase three of that project, so there's still some time down the road. One of the big changes that they made is they removed the raised medias around the network in the city. So if you remember, that was a big point of contention between the schools and the churches, with the raised medias that were blocking the access. All now is one oh five, so those have been removed from the scope. And we are also working through, or continuing to work through, a utility exception with them. So their product up four, there's a lot of utilities, obviously, text out right away. Some of them are in physical conflict that have to be removed, some is still meeting their standard for depths and clearances, so that's the exception where we're working to be able to get as much as we can in place to reduce that cost. So that's ongoing.
Catherine made a good point, too. If they're going to put some sidewalks on the south side, why do we need to dig up the north side?
Yeah.
Right? So that's a cost savings.
Text, and then the next one, the act, not the next one, the Atkins Creek Drainage Improvements, that project did let, so they bid out the drainage improvements projects to repair more of that in its creek, down to about two hundred, three hundred feet from ten ninety-seven. It's supposed to begin construction in August, and per text dot, there will still be ten ninety-seven partially open, so there'll be some impacts to traffic, but an awful closure like to add.
Chris, I noticed on Superior Properties, you've mentioned that you hadn't heard anything about them plating, but I guess I've heard that they're waiting on us for something? Are we owing them anything?
So they, we could go back and forth on the development agreement, so as of this afternoon, we have plating comments back to them, where, so the original, original plan is areas that need water and sewer, and those are hard to serve them. Development plans have changed multiple times, now they are, most recently, requesting to upsize the water line on Sidenton, so Sidenton also is the south street.
Sure.
Upsize the water line and move it back around to get rid of that, which is good. But the upsizing, so when they were originally doing the work and only served them, they were going to do that design work. Since in constructed on their behalf, since it doesn't affect anyone, after that change was made, we did, if it was on for autograph staff, is having developers solely responsible for replacing that water line that existing residents are tied off of, and so that project would be, so that was the last change in, which is the agreement they respond to their looking at this after him, that the water lines were designed and constructed by the city, since it's affecting existing people, and then the sewer work that only serves them is designed.
And the final, okay, approval, everybody was okay with them having residential to the left and the commercial at the corner of Lone Star Parkway and one forty-nine?
Correct. So it's the immediately adjacent to the convention center.
Yes.
Is the community center. So there's ponds along the frontage, and the back is multi-family.
Okay.
And that is rezoned previously.
Right.
Near to the east of that, kind of off of one oh five, is storage, any storage?
One forty-nine?
One forty-nine. One of those. It's closer to one forty, but it's a store, we're getting a retail.
Okay. I just knew there were several iterations, and I've been contacted that apparently we were, we were the problem, like, I don't think so.
There's a lot back and forth on both sides of it.
Good, okay.
There, as of now, there are any changes, so if anything happens, they'll be on the due term for approval of that.
And then, I'm hearing rumblings of drainage for the CTE is not holding? Is that the right word?
So we met, I met with the, with MISB and their architect on a couple weeks ago. Not their drainage, but the creek.
Yeah.
So the creek that we were worried about is continuing to erode, and it is not to the point of impacting their site, but it is right up to holding, and it's continuing to erode.
So whose responsibility is that? So say, because I knew they spent several hundred thousand dollars for mediation and try and double all of that intact, but because there's still degradation happening, is that on them to make sure that their soil stays where it should be, or is that us because of drainage issues, or the developer, the owner, who is that?
The historical stance of the city is it's on the owner of the property that is eroding.
Okay.
Currently, the owner of the property that is eroding is the, I guess that's the number, but the mud or town across. What the developer needed over all of Town Creek, so around the school, the owner too that, so the mud was that. Obviously, a lot of backstories, but.
And then, do we know who's on that mud district, then? Are we talking to them to help?
We contacted the attorney a couple times, and so we have a relationship with him. He is currently out, he's quite busy, but we'll continue that conversation and we will.
Is there any indication when a county is going to put the traffic light at Lone Star Bend?
I have not heard of it. So I did reach out last week or the week before on, because the first step was they were supposed to draft a interlocal agreement and send over to the city for review for the cost sharing of that. I have not heard, also, since the road bond passed, I don't know what they have, kind of, the original plan was a temporary signal, a wooden post, and kind of whatever materials they could find, but now that the road bond has passed, they have gone a different approach. I have not heard. It was, we met with them, you know, a month, six weeks ago, it was urgent to get complete, but we have not heard. Call them, it was a draft agreement.
And I don't know whether to bring this up now or later on, when we talk about possible items on the next agenda, but I received a call today, and then I experienced it myself. One forty-nine south at ten ninety-seven, you know, it's one lane, and there's a turn lane, turn light, and that light is completely off. I mean, it was backed up to ten ninety-seven west multiple times this weekend, and that light is completely jacked up. If we can have text dot look at that, I don't know if it's you, if it's Chief, but really, we need a turn lane there because of, but same time, that light does not work in our favor, anyone's favor.
Yeah, always have to, uh, there.
Thanks, okay. I just, I'd stated I would bring that up.
I, I need an explanation on how HEB works, but I don't quite understand this draft agreement that they're providing to a developer, is that they're, who's the developer?
Developer, kind of, use the term, developer is HEB. So they are the owner developing the building on the property. So we say, and we use that as well as for like church and other things, developer is whoever the entity is that is improving the property for commercial church, et cetera. So the development agreement was drafted for HEB specifically, and they were provided that agreement back in March. We had, they provided some comments, required, they didn't, only they were provided comments. They did, they provided comments, they requested a meeting, we had a call with them last week, that's when they said they were fine with everything, it was just voicing their concern over the language that was in there regarding the monumentation. Essentially, I'm paraphrasing, said, "The city has the right to be able to dictate kind of the locations still of the monument." And that was too broad for them to, they wanted to go completely. We said, we say, hey, they will dedicate a site that fronts onto one oh five, that's fifty by fifty, or give some bounds around it, we can work with that, but, you know, we can't remove it completely, because it was important to the city to get it completed. But they need to provide us something tangible, so we can come back to you all if they, if here's what they're proposing, this gives us enough framework.
So HEB, though, they're, they're the, because, you know, Home Depot, they, I saw how they operated and how we, you know, passed there, but then when the VCS thing came up, and then Academy is going to be the base for that, but Academy doesn't build their own stores, they have somebody else do it. And so I'm trying to figure out, how is HEB doing what they're doing? Are they doing it the Home Depot way, or are they doing it?
So HEB will own, are they currently own and able to build the building?
Yes, they bring their own materials.
Versus where VCS folks, VCS is developing the property, and developing the full business plan, but providing the shell to Academy to use, and either purchase or, I don't know, they're determined.
Groundways or?
Right.
That's fairly common, Stan, with retail, the big ones like pharmacies, you see CVS and Walgreens and all those. None of those stores are owned by CVS or Walgreens, right? They'll, they'll put together like a package of ten stores, they'll go to a developer with some investors, they'll go build the buildings, and they'll put them on a twenty year lease, they get guaranteed return on their income, on their investment, and then when CVS is done, or they'll either re-up or move out. But like Home Depot, they self-develop, they buy the land, they own the building, they own the real estate. HEB is the same thing, right? So what VCS is doing is, is they'll build all the shells and then lease it all out.
So it's kind of like when the, I think Home Depot property developed, while some developed, put in the roads and utilities, and then subdivided off the pad sites, Home Depot purchased that pad site and then developed.
Well, I understand that, but who is the developer?
HEB.
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 Yeah.
HEB is going to, they self-develop.
They have more than just a grocery store, they have lots of different businesses.
Okay, it's like another unit.
Yes. They have a real estate division and a construction division.
They'll be at the meeting. Got a meeting and discuss comments. I want to know, is there, are we there or not?
Huh?
I'm talking about the Spaniard, says they have a meeting.
Yeah, we'll be there, they're asking us to be there. Um, if I read, if I read correctly, we have. Um, if I read, if I read correctly, we have 25 developments on this map, and that's wild. 2018, it was like, if there was three, we were excited.
Yeah, we can overlay both to who what's being looked at, pre-development and this, I mean, there's a lot of properties, there's very, there's a very limited number of properties that aren't attached to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 19, April 2025 PD and SEPSA, C E P Z A, I'm just going to go that way out.
You have any other accounts? You have reports? And for you, any of you have any questions?
Nothing uber exciting over the long weekend?
No, sir, it's, uh, last night's rain.
It's last night's rain?
Yes, it was exciting.
Pretty nasty.
Yeah. Thank, thank you. Ms. Tilly?
Sorry, I didn't.
Thought you were going to sneak out of here, didn't you?
I did have any questions for you, but you'll see that my reports slightly change, so maybe it might be a little bit more understandable on what.
What does field investigation mean? You're not out in the field, you're just out driving around.
Yeah, when I'm out in the field, typically it's complaint driven, or things that I need to follow up on, I should be out there more often, but as I get the opportunity to step out there and try to run, sometimes it takes a half day, maybe even longer than a half day for me to be out there.
I did have a question, I believe that the developer that's on Lone Star Parkway, Taylor Morrison, they were halted, correct, and you asked, we did a stop work order, are they back in business?
There was a contest, they should be back.
Okay.
They should be back up there.
Okay.
That's because of the dirt.
The dirt, yes, and that's been remediated?
There's a water tanker, tanker out there now, that's making sure, but I don't think it's a great, we have that.
That's helpful.
But yes.
Okay.
Oh, it's mud.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else that you have for us?
Specific question, um, for me?
I didn't see anything, but there's anything you'd like to expound upon or share, we're all here. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Mike, I did have one question or comment. Um, the pavilion, there was a party there on Sunday, and I got a call that none of the plugs worked, did the storm Friday night knock out?
I don't know, did, did you get ahold of, what did they say after you called them back?
He didn't call me, I mean.
Uh, okay, like a, well, no, he, those were, you said they weren't hot?
Yeah, she said they were not.
So they should just go HEB.
No, Home Depot and get a, yeah, and that's what I suggested, and we said that we would reimburse them 30,000.
Did they really get, did they get?
Um, after, I went back and forth six times, I never heard back, so I'm assuming, but I just didn't know if we had a problem.
Was there all those light poles not hotter?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, but she said it's on the pavilion, and she said the lock, the box was locked or something?
Yeah, it was a break box.
Yeah, the breaker box, yeah, I mean, I.
He told me they didn't need that, so.
Yeah, I don't know either, but I just didn't know if we had an issue because of Friday night.
You used the power grid generator?
Sometimes the GFI is, on the pavilion GFI, but one of the GFIs walked, and it just had to be reset, like.
That's what I figured, but I was like, it's a holiday, I mean, I, I was not available to come into town and look at it. Okay, I just didn't know if we had a problem, that's the only reason I bring it up, okay. All right.
She called me, I'm too locked for things.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the departmental reports as presented. Motion by Ms. Langley to accept departmental reports as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Donaldson. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the departmental reports as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and will accept the departmental reports as presented. Counsel inquiry. Oh, I have a list. Just want to make an announcement that Lake Creek softball is going to state, and I appreciate you, MISD PD and the fire department's going to send them a send-off at 11 o'clock on Thursday, so that's exciting. And, at Lake Creek High School, yes, yeah, at their gym, 11 a.m. on Thursday. MEDC approved the viewpoint to this quaid item, and it wasn't on this agenda because council has to approve it? Can we, when, the gentleman is asking me when we are going to approve it.
Yes, MEDC is paying for it, I was on the phone with the attorney last week, we've already started talking about putting together the resolutions and beginning the public hearing part of it, yes.
Okay, can, I just need a date, he's a great salesperson, applying a lot of pressure, I just don't have answers.
What, what was there?
So Dennis Quaid's got a production company, and they heard about Montgomery, and they want to come and do a feature marketing piece for us, that'll be on Fox News, CNN, for a year, one, like a 10-second spot, a 30-second spot, and a minute and a half spot. And we can, we have, we will have the rights for a year to use that as our marketing as well, but it puts us in front of a lot of.
We have a 60-day waiting period, two readings and a, two resolution readings and a public hearing that we have to go through before we can issue payment.
I think he's just looking for dates and if we're going to move forward, but I told him that MEDC would have to approve it, and then council would have to approve it, so you're telling me it's about 90 days, 75 days to get that done?
Yeah. Sorry. Can you reach out to him?
Yeah. Uh? Jeff Angelo gave it to me. Okay, so there's that, and I talked about the light, sorry, I have a list here. Something on another agenda item, or maybe I should wait till we go to items to consider, but the cemetery on 1097 by the water plant is looking to put in bathrooms.
I think they already have it.
There's no water to those bathrooms?
Right.
Right, so I think Mr. Wilkerson's going to be coming up to MEDC to see if they can get some help. Those bathrooms would only be used when there's a funeral, because they would be, they would be locked at all times unless there's a, an event on that property.
It's just cap fees that they're having issues with.
Okay.
They have to provide us complaints for, for caps, and that's what they're.
Need plans for caps?
Right, they're.
We have a water line on the north side, so they have to bore under the street, and that's expensive.
I see, so say there's not water available there technically.
And that's part of the issue, it's just, it's not, you know, a normal old tap in the city right away, it's, that's got four across the street, which is, that's pretty much.
So the church on the corner does not have water?
Does not have water, no.
Sure, they're, they're watered on, on 149, their bath is on 149.
Of the church that's there on the corner?
You can't come off 149 on the line instead of boring under the road?
But Mike, that building doesn't have water at all, does it?
The church or the bathroom?
Church has water.
Well, they have a lot of. That's from right away from the church, and come through there with the line, instead of boring under the road.
It would be a very long, uh, do that, yeah, I, we could, we could definitely look at it, because you need to fill the church, and we'll see what makes sense, but we wouldn't want the meter for, we want a meter as close to the water line as possible to eliminate the small private line, that's what it needs all its Christmas, the small ones, so it, you know, it would be, it would be the normal versus, they have a solution that can work, but.
So all the water is on, all the water available to the cemetery is across the street, other than in front of the church on 149, is that correct?
Yeah, the full link, any of that.
So where the water plant and those tanks and all of that, there's no water coming out of there?
Right, there's a water line on Business Park Drive.
Yes.
There's private property in between.
Right.
That street to the cemetery, and then private property between the cemetery and 149, so it's really the same situation either way.
Okay.
So either they're crossing, and we have to go across private property from, well, Business Park Drive, or from 149, the shortest route is go across the street, it's just the time of going through, through that stuff, but it's still significantly less water line and.
Have you had that discussion with them, or anyone?
I, I thought, I mean, I know, her bike.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought you had, yeah.
I have emails.
Many years ago.
Yeah, yeah, he said, yes, and he brought it up on Saturday, and so I thought I would bring it up to see if there was another, the expensive boring under the road is what he's trying to avoid.
I think if you understand that, uh, that's why I came up to MEDC, I think you need some money, glad we would, and just try to get the funds to go across the street, because their original plan was to connect to the church, so that wasn't the best way to do it, so, uh, they're working on it with, with MEDC.
See what else I have here? Okay. That's good.
Mayor?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to thank Mike and Public Works for having burgers for city staff and city council last week, we had a good turnout, and it was a good way to celebrate public works.
They were good, thank you.
Very good.
All those in favor of accepting the departmental, oh, but we're at council inquiry, sorry. We'll move on to executive session, wow. 20, closed session, city council meeting, closed session, present the provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, and according to the authority contained in, A, section 551.071, consultation with attorney for the purpose of discussion and deliberations regarding potential litigation, B, section 551.072, deliberations about real property for potential sale of land, C, sections 551.072, deliberations about real property for potential lease of land, D, section 551.074, personnel matters for the purpose of discussion and deliberations regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, and duties of city administrator. It is 7:21, and we will head into executive session. It is 7:21 and we will head into executive session.
Okay. All right, it is 8:27 and we are back into open session. Is there a motion on any of these items?
Oh, I'm thinking. And I wrote it down here. Make a motion to approve the city administrator's contract with a start date of June the 16th.
A motion by Mr. Olson to approve the city administrator's contract for a start date of June 16.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Langley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have the motion period and we will approve the city administrator contract for a June 16th start date. Closing agenda. Items to consider for placement on future agendas.
I don't have any.
With that silence, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A motion by Ms. Langley, seconded by everybody. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right, it's 8:28 and we will adjourn.
We are ready, like a choir up here.